lost jobs. Some progress has been made. The unemployment rate is down from its peak of 10% in October of 2009 to the more recent report of 6.1%. However, we have all seen a small, we've only seen a small decrease in the number of SNAP participants. We know that many families on SNAP are working, but there are others who have not been able to find employment or earn enough to no longer require federal food assistance. The pilot projects we are talking about today are a response to that need, incorporating multiple provisions initially contained in the House passed Farm Bill. The Agricultural Act provides for up to 10 states with up to $200 million top-rate pilot projects designed to help SNAP recipients prepare for and to go to work. The law explains that the approved pilot projects must cover a range of geographic areas, include a mix of voluntary and mandatory participation, and include an assortment of methods designed to promote work. The point of the pilots covering a range of strategies, each within a rigorous evaluation, is to ensure Congress has the necessary information to make informed decisions about a how to help SNAP recipients in the future. For example, although experimentation in cash welfare, we have learned of the success of Work First programs. These programs are designed to get individuals into work as soon as possible and offer them additional training so they can improve their earnings. We expect these sorts of proven Work First programs to be among the pilot projects that are approved. On August 25, USDA released the request for applications and request for proposals for the SNAP work pilots setting into motion the next phase of implementation. I'm pleased that the Department has done significant outreach to the states. I look forward to hearing from US, about USDA's efforts to meet the requirements of the legislation. And again, I appreciate the Secretary being here today to provide clarifications and additional information on the work we've done and will continue to do as these pilots operate over the next three years. And now, before I yield to the ranking member for any remarks he might have, I'd once again indulge him as he used to indulge me when I was the ranking member. My, starting six years ago almost, and now in my tenure as Chairman, for a personal thought. This may well be the last full committee hearing, may well be, the last full committee hearing we have in the 113th session of Congress. And under House Republican rules, when we reconvene in the 114th, most assuredly there will be new leadership on my side of the room. So I'd like to take a moment to thank the Secretary first, uh, for the help that he provided in some of those critical parts of developing the 2012, then the 2013, then the 2014 Farm Bill that ultimately became the Agricultural Act of 2014. Outside of this room, very few people thought we could get our work done. Very few people, as the years rolled along, held out much hope or expectation that we would accomplish our assignment. And the Secretary's part in that, I very much appreciate, Mr. Secretary. And I'd also say to the ranking member, having been your, I guess the term is co-pilot for two years, and now having had your assistance for the last four years, I think it could be fairly said that the committee itself rose to the occasion and worked in a fashion that accomplished what we needed to do. And I very much appreciate the ranking member for that. And I would say to the members on both sides of the aisle, as I've said before many times, good people of different opinions, working to try to achieve the common goal, uh, is still what this legislative body should be all about. And I think, over the course of those two and a half years of legislating, we did that. Now, the folks who'll sit at this table next, uh, next session will continue the process of implementation and working with you, Mr. Secretary. But I do want to express my appreciation to all of you and to note that whatever may happen next year, I intend to continue to work with everyone to try and make sure we have the right agricultural policies for all the good citizens. With that, I would yield, I would yield to the ranking member for any remarks he may have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, um, and I want to commend you for the outstanding job that you did, leading us through this process. And, um, and I am also proud of, of what we've been able to accomplish here and the way we've been able to work together, uh, to make things happen. And thank God we got the bill done when we did, because if we were trying to struggle with it now, it wouldn't, it would never happen, probably. And as I told, um, we had a meeting that I was at, and they were commiserating about how we couldn't get anything done and how screwed up everything was up here and so forth, which I agree with. And I said, you know, uh, what, what needs to happen out there is that they need to just put this whole thing, um, you know, let the Ag Committee be in charge of getting this government straightened out, and we'll make it happen. And I really believe that, we can do that, because we know how to work together, and we know how to, you know, sit down and figure out what both sides need and, you know, can live with. And our colleagues and some of these other committees could learn a valuable lesson from the Ag Committee and, and I, so I commend all of my colleagues for, for their work and, and especially the Chairman for allowing us to, um, do that and for leading us. And, uh, I'm not a big fan of these term limits, myself, but, uh, that's not my business on your side. And I want to thank the Secretary. He's done a, a great job, um, over at the Department for the years that he's been there. Uh, he was very helpful during the Farm Bill. Uh, he was there to help when he could help, and, uh, he stayed out of the way when that needed to happen, and, uh, that didn't always happen in the past. And so, uh, you've been a, a great ally to work with, and it's been helpful to the committee, uh, you know, for your leadership at the Department and for the people at the Department, uh, and the work that, uh, that they've done to help us. And our staffs, and I want to say, you know, our staffs are part of the reason that we're successful. Uh, not only can we work together, our staffs have been able to work together, and that, that doesn't happen in some of the other committees either. So, that said, um, I welcome the Secretary here, and, uh, uh, these work pilot programs that we're looking at today are an example of the bipartisan cooperative work that the Ag Committee does so well. We authorize these pilot projects because we value work. Now, we want to put people back to work. The Farm Bill invested $200 million to develop and improve innovative approaches to SNAP employment and training. The bill provides USDA with clear direction for implementing these pilots and ensures that funding will create sustainable jobs by requiring annual reporting on set performance goals. Keeping a close eye on USDA's Farm Bill implementation should be one of this committee's top priorities, and I think it is one of our top priorities. And I, and I want to mention, I should have mentioned earlier, that the job that, um, the Secretary and the Department is doing and implementing the bill, uh, I've been around here to watch implementations, and I think this is the quickest, uh, most focused implementation that I've seen, so we appreciate, um, what you're doing there. And, um, so, you know, you're working on this part of the bill, but since you're still, as I understand it, awaiting work pilot, uh, project applications, you know, I think we might be getting a bit ahead of ourselves here today. But, um, of course, it's always good to keep educating ourselves, particularly when it comes to SNAP. And I do hope that, uh, we can keep the focus on education and oversight and resist some of these outside pressures I hear about to, to make changes, because it's just not realistic. Uh, you know, some people talk about opening up the bill and make changes, that, that isn't going to happen, and if it ever did, it would be a recipe for disaster. So, you know, we need to keep working, uh, you know, keep doing the oversight, working with the Department, and, um, I don't know exactly when these, I think these pilot projects are not even, the, the due date is not here yet, I guess Secretary will probably alert us to that. So, um, in any event, I thank the Chair for holding today's hearing, and I look forward to the Secretary's testimony and, and carry on.
I thank the ranking member. The Chair would request that other members submit their opening statements for the --
I think, good work that USDA staff has been doing on the implementation of this Farm Bill. And we really welcome the opportunity to speak to the committee today on the status of the pilot programs to improve our efforts to link those on SNAP who are looking for work, uh, to get a job, and those who have a job, perhaps to get an even better job, ultimately designed to reduce the reliance and need for SNAP for those families. I would be remiss if I didn't echo the comments of the Chair and the ranking member in expressing my thanks to the Chair and the ranking member for, uh, great leadership in getting the Farm Bill through the process and for this committee's work in making sure that it happened. This is a, a bill that I think all of you can justifiably be proud of having passed. We are taking very seriously our responsibility to implement this, uh, this bill. We've, as you well know, implemented our disaster assistance program. 262,000 producers have already received assistance, over $2.6 billion. We're excited about the new, uh, conservation programs, uh, the RCCP program and the new easement program. The research foundation has been launched. We've got stacks in SCO out. Uh, we're working on the dairy program and making sure folks understand how to sign up for that. And we anticipate and expect very soon to have information about A R C and P L C out to the countryside. So, uh, this is a bill that you all can be extraordinarily proud of and obviously it would not have happened without strong leadership from the Chair and the ranking member and members of this committee. So I am honored to be a part of this process. Uh, and we are excited about, uh, the work on the E and T program. Uh, there are roughly 5 million able-bodied recipients without dependents who are currently receiving SNAP, Mr. Chair. Uh, and I think a good amount of the $200 million that you all have allocated for this effort needs to be directed, trying to find opportunities for those individuals. We are going to take a diverse approach, as you have requested and suggested and directed. Uh, we're going to look at demand-driven job opportunities. We're going to look at pre-apprenticeships, uh, career pathways. We're going to look at the barriers that may exist, uh, from job search skills to basic skills. We will indeed be geographically diverse in, in our, in our approach. The goal is to find jobs for those who want jobs and need jobs and are without jobs and to find better jobs for those who are currently working. 31% of SNAP households have some form of earnings, uh, so obviously there's still an opportunity there as well. There will be a strong evaluation component, as you have proposed, and there's significant accountability, and we welcome the oversight of this committee. Uh, it's an important, uh, responsibility that you have and it's an important responsibility. Uh, this effort will be collaborative. We'll be working with state, local governments, nonprofit organizations in an effort to try to make this work, uh, to try to find the best possible practices, uh, that can then be used to encourage other states to embrace these best practices. There will be a strong outreach effort, as there has already been. Uh, I am making calls to governors personally, uh, to let them know about this program. Uh, we will have a webinar, uh, on September 24th, which is two days before the letter of intent, uh, deadline of, uh, September 26th. Applications will be due on November 24th and awards are likely to be made on February 23rd, 2015. We look, uh, at a program, uh, that frankly, in the employment and training area, needs more focus. And the great thing about what you all have done is it's given us an opportunity to encourage states to do an even better job. Frankly, we're still leaving resources on the table, uh, and we're not as aggressive as we need to be. Uh, and this E and T program will allow us to be more aggressive. Uh, SNAP numbers are coming down, which is good. It is an effective tool to reduce poverty. We know that as a result of SNAP, 7 million fewer people, uh, are below the poverty line. We know that 2/3 of those receiving SNAP are children, senior citizens, and adult with disabilities, and 7% are veterans, um, the lowest fraud and error rate in the history of the program. So we're excited about this opportunity. Uh, and again, I want to extend, uh, extend my personal thanks to the Chair for his friendship, direction, uh, and counsel, uh, in terms of the Farm Bill and to the ranking member as well. Uh, I have enjoyed working with both you, uh, both of you, uh, and I look forward to continuing work with this great committee. Uh, you have many reasons to be proud of this Farm Bill.
Thank you, Secretary Vilsack. The Chair would like to remind the members that will be, they will be recognized for questioning the order of seniority for members who were present at the start of the hearing. After that, the members will be recognized in order of their arrival and I, as always, appreciate the members' understanding. Uh, with that, Mr. Secretary, I'd like to start by once again noting, I appreciate the efforts, uh, the Department in implementing it on your behalf too. As you mentioned in your testimony, these pilots required extensive engagement with federal partners to adequately prepare for the pilots. And I'd like to focus on the pilot selection process and how you intend to fulfill the statutory requirements for providing a range of pilot projects. The statute says that the pilot projects, when considered as a group, test a range of strategies, including strategies that target individuals with low skills or limited work experience, individuals subject to the requirements under Section 600, and individuals who are working. Are located in a range of geographic areas and states, including rural and urban areas, emphasize education and training, rehabilitative services for individuals with barriers to employment, rapid attachment to employment, mixed strategies, and test programs that assign work recipients to mandatory and voluntary participation in employment and training activities. Does the scoring methodology you have proposed in your RFA support the idea that a true range of projects will be approved?
Mr. Chairman, absolutely. Um, we are looking for a broad range of ways and strategies to address this issue. Job search, job search training, workfare, work experience, basic skills, voc-ed, uh, self-employment training, job retention, uh, looking at data collection, evaluation, collaboration with partners. We are anxious to use this program to indeed identify best practices because there are just a handful of states that are doing this well today. We need all 50 states to do it well. And we need to recognize that there are different challenges for different groups of people. So clearly, the scoring system, the evaluation will be designed to provide as much diversity as we possibly can because we need as many good ideas as we can get.
I'm always loathe to ask what-if questions, Secretary, but what if the applications are concentrated among a certain type or particular type, is not well-developed to score? Is, will there be the capacity to go back and reflect on that?
Well, I think that's why we have, uh, the pre-application process, uh, to, to sort of make sure that folks are taking this seriously. It's also, uh, why we have a strong evaluation, uh, component to this, Mr. Chairman. We are going to be looking at this periodically throughout the course of the two-to-three-year period that these, uh, test, uh, pilots will be working to make sure that people are doing what they said they were going to do and, and making sure that they are actually fulfilling the plan that they outline. So the expectation is, there's going to be great interest in this, uh, from the discussions I've had with governors. The expectation is that folks will create a wide, diverse, uh, set of, of, of practices and programs, uh, and then there will be a strong evaluation and oversight, uh, effort. And if you're not doing what you need to do, we will pull the plug on the pilot, uh, or we will encourage folks to step up their game. The, the reality is that today, we simply aren't doing the job we need to do. And states, there are few, a handful of states are doing this very well, as I said earlier, uh, but there needs to be an aggressive effort in all 50 states. And if there is, I, I think you'll see, uh, numbers come down in SNAP.
And I think, Secretary, you've just asked my, answered my final question, what will we do if there's not a proper mix? And you've indicated very clearly that's the case. I have great faith in the amazing laboratories that are the states of this union and the 10 that will ultimately be selected. I think, uh, I just have great expectations for what they will accomplish. But that was the spirit, to think outside the box, to help people and help them, yeah, for real. With that, I yield back the balance of my time and turn to the gentleman, uh, from Minnesota for five minutes for his questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you, um, explain, um, in your written testimony, you refer to rehabilitative services and rapid attachment to work. Could you explain what those, how that, what that means?
Well, there are a, a, a number of different strategies because there is not a single, uh, classification or way that you can describe a SNAP recipient. There are so many different segments of SNAP. Uh, there are people, uh, who have not had a job for an extended period of time. And so it may be necessary for us to work with them, uh, to provide the basic skills that will allow them to be successful from day one. There may be people who have been recently unemployed, but because of where they are or the circumstances of their life, it's been difficult for them to find work, but they're work-ready. We're in a position to work with them to maybe improve their job, uh, their job search skills, uh, to be able to hone down, to find where the best, uh, mix might be and the best fit might be. That's a process that we hope to be able to, to encourage with these pilots. So it really depends, uh, individual by individual, uh, which is why it's important for this program to be as diverse and as creative as possible. There are folks with, uh, some disabilities, uh, that are still, have great potential. We want to help those folks as well. Whoever's in a position to work, we want to be able to try to link them up with the work that is out there. And we want them to be successful, Congressman. It, it doesn't do much good if we get somebody a job and, and, and two weeks into the job, it's just not, it, it just doesn't work for them or, or they're just not ready for it, they're, they don't have the skills. We want to make sure this is a success, uh, for the individual and for the program. Uh, so, uh, we're going to try to cast the net pretty wide here, uh, and be, and really encourage folks to be creative. I've got three governor calls today in three states that we think, uh, ought to be engaged in this. Uh, and we'll be making governor calls, uh, throughout, uh, the next couple of weeks because I want governors to understand, this is a real opportunity.
Um, why, um, why do, uh, some states offer voluntary E and T and, and others mandatory? What?
Well, uh, the, the sad reality here is until Congress put the spotlight on this effort, states really have not done, uh, except for a handful of states, have not, not as good a job as they need to do. In fact, uh, we have, we have, as you know, 100% federally funded programs, but $17 million of that federal resources not being spent. We need to put more focus on states that are getting the 100% match to actually use it. Of the states that, uh, and every state understands, I think, that there's a 50% match, but only a handful of states even use that program. Uh, but yet, we've spent several hundred million dollars a year on this program. We're, we're just not getting as much as we should for the money that we're spending. So, uh, it, it may depend on making sure that governors are fully aware of the existence of these programs. It may be that we do a better job of aggressively promoting this program and, and requiring states to step up. We just, we, frankly, we haven't done as good a job on that as we should. Uh, but this effort allows me now to really put a focus on this. And I can tell you that our team understands, appreciates, this is a personal, uh, a personal focus of mine. This is why I'm here today to testify, is to sort of re, uh, to reinforce the fact that this is at the Secretary level. This is something that I'm very, very interested in. I have actually looked at the application, uh, the pre-application process. I have, I have been working with staff and making sure that we cast a wide net on this.
So, um, if the, um, the 100% funding, that comes with a certain set of rules and so forth, and you've got to follow that?
Right.
And if you go to 50/50, then you have more flexibility?
A little more flexibility. Um, and, you know, part of what we're going to do with these pilots, obviously, is whatever the rules are, they've got to be followed. But there's a bit more flexibility with this pilot than there is with the normal program, which is, I think, what we will try to sell or market to, to our friends and state government.
And there's, uh, a handful of states that, that use the 50/50 significantly, it looks like, and, and a lot of states that don't use it at all.
The largest users are New York, California, New Jersey, Illinois, and Washington. Uh, and, uh, Kevin Kinkan, the Undersecretary, has actually traveled around the country to various facilities. I've been to facilities as well, uh, to see the kind of work that they're doing. Uh, some facilities do a great job and others just frankly, don't. And that's, uh, I think that's the great thing about this pilot. It really gives us an opportunity to sort of redesign this program so it's more effective than it's been.
All right. Thank you, Secretary. And now, yield back.
Gentleman yields back. The Chair now recognizes the gentleman from Virginia, Mr. Goodlatte, for five minutes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Secretary, welcome. Uh, and I will second the, or third, the remarks of, uh, the, uh, ranking member and the Secretary regarding your leadership, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I had the honor of, uh, being the ranking member with Mr. Peterson as Chairman during the last Farm Bill, and I know how contentious these are, but in the end, we reached agreement and, uh, not only passed Farm Bill, we passed a Farm Bill that withstood a presidential veto. And so, uh, this one was also contentious and took a long time to come together, but I do think it moved in the right direction towards, uh, more free markets and I was pleased to vote for it. Uh, Mr. Secretary, I appreciate your work in that regard as well. Uh, with regard to these pilot programs, uh, this is, uh, an issue that this, uh, committee has been dealing with for a couple of decades at least. In addition to block granting the TANF program, Temporary Assistance to Needy Families, to the states, the Personal Responsibility and Work Opportunity Act of 1996 added work requirements for adults without dependents. States may apply to the Department to waive this requirement. I believe you stated in your testimony that there are now more than 5 million people who are able-bodied adults without dependents who are receiving food stamps. You also stated that about 31% of the people, uh, on food stamps have some form of employment. Can you bring those two together? What, do you know how many of the 5 million able-bodied have some work as opposed to are, are not working?
Well, Congressman, the requirements are that if you are able-bodied without dependents and you are required to commit yourself to either working or receiving some sort of formal education or training to get work. And if you do not, then your benefits are limited to three months of benefits every 36 months. Now, states have some flexibility with reference to that.
I, I got several questions, so.
Okay.
Do you know how many of the 5 million are, are?
Well, 31% of all households have earnings. Uh, and so, uh.
Let me, let me just move on to my, my point here. Has it been the practice of the U.S. Department of Agriculture to encourage states to apply for a waiver of the work requirement? And if so, why?
Well, I don't think it's been, uh, the practice of us to encourage states. I think we basically make sure they're aware of that, uh, situation and depending upon the economic circumstances in their state, they may decide to utilize the waiver because unemployment is high in the state or unemployment is high in a particular area of the state.
Okay. The language that was accepted in the Farm Bill, and I'm paraphrasing, stated that one of the strategies of pilot programs is to emphasize education and training and rehabilitative services for individuals with barriers to employment for, quote, "rapid attachment to employment." The goal by this Congress was to increase actual employment. Can you assure us that the USDA will pick projects with that, with that goal, intended to increase actual employment?
Yes.
And will, uh, uh, workfare requirements, which you mentioned again in your remarks as one of the options, uh, be treated, uh, with favor, uh, by the Department?
That's the reason why we put it in the application. We're encouraging applications, uh, to promote that. Obviously, it depends on what the states submit, Congressman, but there are no preconceived notions about what is in or out. We want to make sure we get the best possible ideas, the best practices can be identified.
If states wish to collaborate with one another and propose one single application containing multiple sites and interventions across certain states and sub-state areas, would the USDA consider multi-state applications?
I don't know of a reason why we wouldn't. Um, we're always looking for creative and new ways to do things and we've encouraged that kind of regional approach in a lot of other, other Farm Bill programs, including our conservation programs.
And recently, this committee heard testimony from, uh, Ms. Squire, who is the New Mexico Secretary of Human Services. She testified that the amount of federal income taxes needed to pay food stamps for one year is $1,300 on average per income-paying household, with each tax-paying household buying almost five months of groceries for their families. This is unsustainable. In addition to these pilot projects, are there other initiatives that the USDA is taking or encouraging the states to take that move exempt able-bodied individuals to work?
Well, I think we actually are taking a look at the regular program that has not been utilized as effectively and are doing a better job of encouraging and, and, uh, stressing the need for states to be more engaged in the regular program. The fact that there are so few states that take advantage of this is a problem, uh, and this pilot and this effort has allowed us to highlight that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman yields back. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. David Scott, for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and welcome. Mr. Secretary, um, I must admit, I'm a little concerned as to, uh, the timing and why we're having this hearing, uh, at this time on this very important subject. Today is Wednesday, September 17th. The applications for the pilot program-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman yields back. The chair recognizes the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. David Scott, for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and welcome. Mr. Secretary, I must admit I'm a little concerned as to the timing and why we're having this hearing at this time on this very important subject. Today is Wednesday, September 17. The applications for the pilot program were just released August 25, three weeks ago. The question period regarding applications doesn't open until Friday, so you can understand that I think there is an overcloud here as to why and what the purpose of this hearing is and the timing of it. So I just wanted to clear the air on that. So in your opinion, let me ask you, Mr. Secretary, what, if any, information can you provide regarding the applications that have already been submitted by the states for the pilot program?
Well, Congressman, I'm not sure that we have actually received applications. I can tell you that there is interest in this program, because I've spoken personally to governors. And we're going to be conducting a webinar for those who have questions about precisely how to go about applying. As I indicated in my opening remarks, we've got the pre-application efforts coming up next week, and then the full applications are due in November. And then we'll take a couple of months to really review them and evaluate them and make awards in February.
So at this point, no state has submitted application?
I may be wrong about that, but I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Just for the record, could you, could you qualify or define exactly what? Because the apex of this whole pilot program is what is referred to as able-bodied adult with dependents. Is that correct?
Without dependents.
I'm sorry, yeah, without dependents. And how do you define that?
Well, this is an individual who is capable of working and has no significant barrier as a result of age or physical condition that would make it impossible or difficult for them to work, and that obviously doesn't have dependents. And, I mean, the reality is that there are people who have been unemployed for an extended period of time. There are people who have been recently unemployed, and it falls, both of those fall into that category. And there are folks who have been dealing with a variety of issues that can be overcome, and they can become employable. So we want to work with folks. I think that the bottom line is, the vast majority of people would prefer to have a job and prefer to be on their own than necessarily taking assistance from the government, but it's a good thing we have it for folks who do need it.
Absolutely. And I certainly agree with you. I mean, most recipients certainly want to have a job. So, and the other reason I ask that is because the fastest-growing group of those who are going on food stamps are our veterans. And there are a large number of reasons for that, considerations of PSD. I mean, one may look normal, may act. We're having problems with that, and they are concurring certain injuries that do that. So I'm very concerned about making sure we have precision when it comes to the definition of what is an able-bodied adult without dependents. Now, let me ask you, Mr. Secretary, are the rules for work registration in here, that person must register for work, correct?
They are required to make themselves available unless there's a waiver in place or unless they're in an area that has been designated by the state as not being subject to these requirements.
Okay. And where and how do they register? And how is this information getting out to them?
Well, I think that there's, they're able to register, it probably varies from state to state, Congressman. I suspect that some are required to register at human service offices, and some are required to register in workforce development offices. But we can provide you a list of those, a more specific and definitive answer on that for your state or for any state that you're interested in.
Right. That'd be very important. And you are aware that, of course, the key to this is the partnership with the states. And a variety of states each have different, shall we say, attitudes about the program. The United States Department of Agriculture is the oversight agency on this. Is this correct?
We have the responsibility, yes.
And will there be a standard that all of these states must hold? Because some are voluntary, some have to, it's mandated. And there are states, as you know, there are certain states who have a more draconian approach to this issue than others. What are the safeguards that are in place with the Agriculture Department to ensure fairness and to ensure that this program is not abused or misused or used in a way that is unfairly negative to persons who unfortunately have to have food stamps?
The gentleman's time has expired, but the secretary most assuredly can answer the question.
Well, I would say in the, in the, in the rules and the structure of the applications, Congressman, there are additional protections to ensure that this, these programs are not abused and misused. Bottom line, we want to work with states in a collaborative effort. We want to work with local governments in a collaborative effort. We think there is an opportunity here to find best practices and to encourage better practices on the part of states. You're absolutely correct when you say that there is a disparity of how this is viewed from state to state. That's obviously a concern, and it's frankly something that we need to do a better job of at USDA to ensure that states take this program seriously, because it reflects on the entire SNAP effort. And we want to make sure that whatever reflects on it is a more positive reflection.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
And I would take a moment to note to my colleague the issue concerning timing. It's my understanding that we potentially, when we go home this week, will have most likely two weeks of session in November, two weeks in December. And it was the chairman's view that, considering the amount of debate and amendment and discussion in committee and on the floor, that these were important issues, just as you very effectively used your time asking those questions. It was very relevant. Now, the chair recognizes the gentleman from Iowa, Mr. King, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first like to welcome my fellow Iowan before the committee here, and thank you for your service to our country and the issues that are before us, Mr. Secretary. I'd like to start with a kind of a big-picture analysis and slice this thing down to roughly start with 316 million Americans and slice it down to the 5 million that are the subject before us here. And I'd start with this, a number I happen to have in my head that probably needs to be adjusted from four or five months ago, that out of 316 million Americans, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, there are about 104.1 million who are of working age that are simply not in the workforce. We have unemployed numbers roughly in the 12 million area. That's included within that. Balance of that's 92 million that are categorized as not working, perhaps given up, but also some are retired, some are homemakers, some are in school, but that would be those 16 and up. We've got a huge workforce out there that we're not tapping, and somewhere around 142 million is the score of the number of our workforce that we have. I didn't hear in your testimony the number of those who are currently receiving SNAP benefits?
It's 46.2 million, I believe.
Okay. And it's gone down then a little over, not quite a million in the last year, year and a half, something like that?
I think it's, over the last 15 months, it's, it's a little bit more than a million less than it was 15 months ago.
So I am encouraged by that trend. It's gone dramatically the other way in the previous several years, so I am encouraged by that. And in looking at the pilot programs that are there, first, I draw a blank. What's our unemployment? What, excuse me, what is the, what is the minimum wage in the United States today?
Well, I know what it should be, Congressman.
I thought you might offer that, but I'm curious about what it is.
Well, is it $7.25? I don't know.
I'll settle on that. I wasn't sure. We think that's right, but nobody is working for that that we know of, but $7.25 in that area. Is that a factor in these pilot programs if there are, if there are jobs that are offered at minimum wage? Is that a factor that, or is your administration going to look at what you think the, the minimum wage should be rather than what the minimum wage is?
Well, it's clear, Congressman, that if we raise the minimum wage to $10.10, we'd have 3.6 million fewer people receiving SNAP. Now, that, that is clear. But the purpose of this pilot is to advance the opportunities and to figure out precisely what the barriers are, what the skill sets are required, what the tribe training efforts must be.
My question really is focused on, is work at minimum wage or above, is that a goal? Or is the proposed minimum wage by the administration going to be a benchmark that might restrain some further employment that could be recruited by the pilot program?
It's a goal only in the sense that if there are people who have work, they could get better work and higher wages and therefore not need the program. We obviously want to encourage that as well.
And so if a state has a pilot program that increases, that brings people to work at minimum wage or someplace under the $10.10 an hour, that wouldn't be, your policies would not be prejudiced against those jobs?
No.
Jobs are preferable regardless if they're minimum wage or above.
What we're trying to do is put folks to work, and we're trying to match it with the demand that exists for workers. So it's not a situation where we want to train somebody for a job that doesn't exist or that isn't available. We want to make sure that folks are prepared for the jobs that are in the economy and are available.
Good. I like that. And it brings me to another curiosity that I have, is that we're focusing these pilot programs within the states to be run by the states, and we're aware that there are states like North Dakota that are begging for employees to come up into that country and work in the, in the oil fields and in all the businesses that have been spun off of the oil fields. Their unemployment rates are particularly low. Iowas have come up to where they are a little better than, well, significantly better than the rest of the nation. But what we've seen historically, or when the Okies went to California, I might add, they went to the jobs. Is there anything in these pilot programs that would allow for transition from state to state and encourage the relocation of employees? Because that seems to be a consistent barrier of people whose roots are down, and we seem to try to want to bring jobs to where people live rather than people to where the jobs are.
Well, I would say that a state, or states could put together a proposal similar to that that would be considered. There's nothing prohibiting that or preventing that. The bottom line here, Congressman, is we want folks to be as creative and innovative as possible, because at the end of the day, we need to do a better job of this than we've been doing, and we need to identify programs and practices at work.
And I would encourage you to encourage that. I think that's one of the barriers we have to employment in this country is a resistance to relocation. If that could be part of this, that would cause me to have an even more optimistic view about these pilot projects. I thank you for your testimony, Mr. Secretary, and I yield, Mr. Chairman, Oki, the balance of my time.
And I thank the gentleman from Iowa, and yes, yielding me his negative nine seconds back, kind of the way my Oki ancestors probably felt sometimes. That said, we now turn to a gentleman who understands this very well, a gentleman from California, Mr. Costefer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I too want to add my congratulations and thanks for your hard work on the farm bill and many other efforts that all of us in the farm, on the Farm Committee have engaged in with you in making some successes happen for agriculture across America. Mr. Secretary, I want to commend you as well for your good efforts. A quick question, and then I want to talk about the focus of the SNAP programs here. Mr. Secretary, a number of my constituents are concerned about the review process and the awards of grants provided through the Specialty Crop Research Initiative, which is the panoply of many diverse crops we grow in California and around the country. Would you and your staff follow up with mine to discuss the review process for awards specifically on the vineyard management proposals?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members, it has been mentioned here by the secretary in his testimony, the major goal of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistant Programs, Employment and Training, as we all refer to as SNAP, is to help people move forward and to become self-sufficient by helping them secure and maintain jobs. Obviously, that's the goal I think we all embrace. And I want to specifically note a program in my district, which I have previously briefed the Food and Nutrition Services under Secretary Kinkanen, who I think is doing a good job, called the Fresno Bridge Academy. My friend Pete Weber and his partners have used imagination and creativity to really think out of the box, and that's why I think these pilot programs come into play. It's a unique program that offers producing excellent, that is producing excellent results. Let me give you an example. In the most recent graduating class, 77% of the participating SNAP clients came in unemployed. The remaining were underemployed. Eighteen months later, 83% of the clients had obtained employment or job advancement, and 32% had achieved complete self-sufficiency and reliance. Those are good numbers in the right direction, I believe. These pilot programs launched by the USDA well help, I think tremendously, the percentage of people enrolled in programs throughout the country like this Bridge Academy in Fresno. But I am sure that many of my colleagues are wondering what is the cost in achieving these results. The Bridge Academy, as an example, developed along with Fresno County Department of Social Services, is, has a cost-benefit model that helps monetize and evaluate the results of this, this program. They found that for every federal tax dollar used, there was a $5.50 return to the taxpayer in the form of reduced outlays for food stamps and plus income taxes paid by people who were previously tax users rather than taxpayers. So my questions, Mr. Secretary, to follow. Has the Food and Nutrition Services developed a cost-benefit-minded application model for, across the country, for these pilot projects?
I don't know that we've specifically crafted that type of return on investment, but it certainly could be part of the overall evaluation process.
Good. Well, I would be interested in looking to see if we could work together in a collaborative fashion to maybe use this model as a way to, really, I think, try to do what many of us here believe we ought to be doing.
I'm hopeful in the evaluation process that we actually have diversity, a bit of diversity in the evaluators as well, so that we, we do get a cross-section of good ideas in terms of how best to evaluate these programs.
You're talking about calling the governors. How do we get this imagination and creativity that's been expressed in my area, in Fresno, expanded around the country?
Well, I think it's, that's what this whole point is, this, this whole effort is about, is about identifying best practices and making sure that governors are personally engaged and aware of this opportunity. That's why I'm calling my former colleagues to say, hey, this program is out there, and you ought to be focused on this.
I want to segue to another question area. As part of the 2014 Farm Bill, which you're doing a good job in implementing, we have the conservation compliance requirements that were transferred from direct payments on any farming operation that may be receiving a crop insurance subsidy. As you know, from your several mini-visits, I should say, to our great city of California and our diverse agriculture that involves a lot of these fruits and nuts and wonderful specialty crops, I passed some of them out to members of the committee a moment ago, that we're starting to hear concerns on how growers throughout California, over the new Farm Bill requirements linking the crop insurance participation to conservation requirements. Mr. Secretary, how do we work through this in the department to ensure that we figure this out?
Well, we first want to make sure that every producer knows that they have a responsibility by June of 2015 to file the AD 1026 form. Some of the producers that you've mentioned may not have been used to filing such a form, but they are absolutely required to do so under the Farm Bill. And the reason for it is that we are continuing to expand crop insurance availability to specialty crop producers. And if they fail to do this by June of 2015, they won't be able to get the assistance from the government in terms of subsidies on, on the premiums, and they won't be able to get the coverage that they might be, that they would like to be able to get. So first and foremost, it's about making sure that folks comply with that mandatory requirement under the Farm Bill and making sure people are aware of it.
Thank you very much. My time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman's time has expired.
Mr. Chairman, can I just mention that the only goodies that I got were the Oklahoma peanuts, which I appreciate. I didn't get any of those specialty crops.
You are a lucky man, Mr. Secretary. You are a lucky man. I now recognize the gentleman from Texas, Mr. Naglvar, for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for holding this important hearing. And Secretary Vilsack, thank you again for, you know, coming today. You know, in reading through your testimony, you talked about that the USDA's request, you know, you mentioned types of proposals that you're interested in from, seeing from states and, and different types of approaches. And I think one of the things that you mentioned there that have shown promise with other populations. And certainly, I think we need to be searching out for existing models, you know, that other states may want to implement or try. But one of the things I would hope that you built into the process, and I'd be interested to hear your reflection on that and how you might implement that, is we also want to make sure that we create an opportunity for some new ideas and new innovation of ways to do that. Because obviously, we've got a lot of people on food stamps, you know, and so some of the methods that we've been using to get people out of property, poverty have not been working. I think food stamps is just an indication, it's a good indicator of that. And unfortunately, it's, it's an indicator that says there's a problem out there, when we have one in five Americans, you know, currently on food stamps in this country. So in, in the process... on food stamps in this country. So in the process, how have you built in to make sure that you not only look for things that are working now, but, you know, encourage people to come up with new innovation?
Well, I think a couple of things. First of all, we are encouraging more collaboration and more partnerships. We think that there is a need for more partners to be engaged in this who have creative ideas and new ideas. We also are indicating a desire to work with different groups of individuals. There may be individuals who have barriers. We want case management opportunities to be presented for those types of individuals. There may be circumstances where we want our partners to identify jobs that are in demand and how we get the people that are on SNAP into those jobs that are in demand, what skills are required, what education is required, what training is required. So I think we have set this up with enough flexibility and encouragement for people to be creative. And also, as I talk to governors, explaining to them that what we have been doing is not working as effectively as it should. In some cases, it's because people aren't taking advantage of the programs. In some cases, people aren't paying attention to the programs. So I think the combination of outreach, the webinars, and the way in which we've structured this pilot, we hope and believe will result in a diversity of ideas, new ideas, creative ideas, and innovative ideas. That is the goal.
Well, I appreciate that. Now, you've got 10 slots there, and I would hope that you would reserve a slot or two, you know, for some really out-of-the-box, you know, kind of thinking so that we can make sure. I guess that one of the other questions is that you've mentioned, and I appreciate this, that you're taking this at the secretary level, and you've been reaching out personally to some of the governors. What's your initial response? Are, is there interest in this on, from the governors that you've spoken to?
There is, but the initial response candidly is, boy, I didn't know there was such a program. I need to check. Or we will say, did you know that you haven't spent all the resource that you have available? That always gets a governor's attention from prior experience. So I think these calls are effective, and it certainly underscores their need to be involved. At the end of the day, this will not work unless it is perceived in the states that we award as a priority at the highest level. This can't just be the Director of Human Services concerned or the Director of Workforce Development. They really have to hear from the governor, you know what, we need to do a better job of this. And if they do, then I'm very, very confident we're going to do a better job.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And one last thing, I would be doing my job if I didn't mention to you how important that those APH adjustments are to the people in my part of the world. There have been, you know, several years of drought here, and you know, that was called for in the Farm Bill to be implemented by the spring of 2015, and it's indication that you're not going to be able to meet that. But, you know, I think several of us have reached out to you and saying if there are ways to, you know, implement portions of that in those areas that have had, you know, problems in the past that, but anyway, I certainly would encourage you to continue to work in that direction.
Congressman, we obviously have received not only your directive, but also the chairman's directive and others, and we recognize this. This is a challenge for us, as you know. We are, we have looked at the idea of trying to parcel out certain sections of the country. The problem, in addition to the staffing issues that we've addressed, is that it could potentially create a significant problem in terms of inequality and equity and premium increases that are not necessarily warranted. So it is a complicated issue. We'll do our best.
Gentleman Yieldsback, thank you for noting my interest too, Mr. Secretary. The Chair now turns to the gentle lady from Ohio for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Chairman, I too would like to say that certainly I appreciate your leadership, but more importantly, your friendship. It has been a privilege and a pleasure to serve with you, especially during the time of the Farm Bill, so I thank you, and we will miss your leadership.
Mr. Secretary, thank you so much for being here. We all know that the SNAP program works. We know that fraud, which is certainly a concern of my colleagues in particular, is at its lowest in the history of this country. We know that the numbers of people on SNAP are going down as we expected they would. So I'm only going to ask you two questions, and I'm going to give you the rest of the time to address something if there's something you still need to address. The first one is that, as I look at my own district, there are over 33,000 families that receive SNAP. But over 67% of them, over the last 12 months, have had one or more workers in their household. So it's not that they don't work. But the question is, what impact do you believe the emphasis on work-based learning opportunities outlined in the August 25 request for application will have on the success of the pilots that we've been discussing today? And secondly, in what ways can work pilots supplement the economic stimulus that SNAP already provides to this nation?
Well, Congressman, what we hope is be able to identify strategies to get folks who are currently employed better working opportunities by looking at that demand-driven approach. What are the demands for jobs out there, and how can we link people up and make sure they've got the skills to be successful? It's not surprising that the percentages you've outlined are what they are in your district. The reality is that of those who are capable of working, 80% of SNAP beneficiaries are, have either worked just prior to needing SNAP or are, after they leave SNAP, are employed. So, I mean, people do want to work, and so the question is, why aren't they working? And in some cases, it may be they are not aware of how to go about looking for those good jobs. In some cases, it may be that there is a transportation barrier, there's a, some other barrier, a basic skills barrier, let's figure that out. In some cases, it may be that this person has a skill, and if we added just a bit more to that skill with an apprenticeship or pre-apprenticeship program, they would be able to do a job that is a significantly higher-paying job than the job they have. So the bottom, the bottom line to all this is getting more people to work who want to work and getting people better-paying jobs who already have jobs. And if you do that, you're going to see a decline in the need for SNAP. And that's, in our view, the right way to go about doing it.
Thank you. You can, I have no more questions for you. If there's something that, a question that was asked that you need to respond to, or something else you'd like to say that the committee, please feel free. Otherwise...
I feel compelled to note, for the record, that Mr. Costa did provide walnuts and pistachios to go...
Californians are always trying to catch your eye.
Mr. Chairman, I yield back the balance of my time.
Gentleman, Lady Yieldsback, I now turn to the gentleman from the Republic of Texas, Mr. Conaway, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Resemble those remarks. I too want to brag on you for the great work you've done. I would, I would use that tired phrase, you've left some big shoes to be filled, but that would apply in any case, whether you've done a good job or not. But you have done a great job, and you're...
And hopefully, I won't leave anybody a case of political athlete's foot, I promise.
I got you. Mr. Secretary, thank you for being here. The law has required that you have this process started at 180 days. That I'd be neglect if I didn't mention that you were a bit late on that, getting it out some 200 days on this process started. Do you anticipate any other delays in the timelines that you've laid out at this point?
I don't, Representative. I would say that our team, if you take a look at the totality of the work that we've been doing on the Farm Bill, has done a good job of implementation. There may be a little slippage here or there, but I think we've done a lot of work in a short period of time. And what folks don't realize is a lot of this work funnels into the General Counsel's Office and the Budget Policy Office, and the same people are having to do the conservation stuff, the foundation stuff, the ARC, PLC stuff, et cetera. But we have a timeline, and we're going to, we're going to guarantee you the awards are going to be made in February.
All right. Well, I was, I was going to brag on you about the cost-benefit analysis sections of the proposals, but you weren't real clear that those were in there. They're in there, and I appreciate those being a part of the process of evaluating these proposals. Looking at the existing programs, you say we've got $83 million we spend each year. That means there's 17 that's unspent. Have you surveyed the states that don't apply to find out why they're not applying for the money? Is it, if you look at the, if you look at this request for application, those 30-some-odd pages, is it, is it just too hard to get into the program for a lot of states? Is that what I'm asking?
I don't think that's what it is, Congressman. I think it's a lack of understanding of, and a lack of prioritization.
Okay.
And, and, you know, it's not a criticism. There's a lot going on in a state and a lot going on in an economy. This may not rise to the level of priority. But with this pilot, what you've done is you've created a spotlight that I think will enhance and encourage more folks...
All right. So this would be on top of that existing 100. We didn't supplant that. That, the 100% match money is still there as well, is this new money as well?
We need to do a better job in both the 100% and the 50% match. Don't have a question about that.
Yeah. On the 100%, is there a matrix created of success? In other words, how many people find jobs? How many people come off of SNAP as directly related to the programs that are there?
Well, that's certainly the goal, and we'll be happy to give you the details of that.
Yeah. On the, on the $5 million that you mentioned, I assume, you may not have it off the top of your tongue, you don't expect that, but you have that categorized by state?
I believe it, I think it probably is.
And we would be able to tell which of those states have exercised the waiver on the work requirement for able-bodied adults under 50...
Well, 43 states have exercised that waiver, so it's probably...
I know, but I'd be interested, if you could, to give us the data that shows, is there a disproportionate number, that $5 million, in states that have exercised the waiver versus the seven states that haven't? That'd be helpful if we could look at, look at that. How do I answer this question? Again, all politics is local, and I'm blessed to represent a district where the two major cities have an unemployment rate of 3%. There are now hiring signs everywhere. I also grew up in a family where my dad thought it was a lot more important, he had a job than where we lived. So if the rigs are running in Borger, Texas, we lived in Borger, Texas. And if the rigs are running in Odessa, Texas, we lived there. And so getting to Mr. King's comments, you know, going to where there's a job seems to have a great deal of benefit. So how do I answer this question? I had a lady employer come to me, and she said she had additional hours in overtime for her team to work. She offered it to her team, they said yes, and then within a day or so, they came back to her and said, we can't work those extra hours because it will have a negative effect on our benefits. How do I, how do I answer that, that employer as to why she can't, why those folks would not be willing to work the extra hours? Because it caused them to cross some artificial threshold?
Well, Congressman, I'd be a little bit concerned about answering that question because I don't really know the personal circumstances of those workers. I don't know in terms of benefits what they're specifically talking about. I don't know what their family situation is. I don't know what their childcare costs are.
That's fair, that's fair. But, but if we're creating these pilot programs, how are you going to address that issue that they, get them off the benefits, but they go into a job that makes 12 bucks an hour?
Well, I think that there are a significant number of folks who are looking for work that we can do a better job of finding them that opportunity, and I'm very confident that they will take that opportunity.
My time's always expired. I'm pleased that this is a state-based effort, because it's not, quite frankly, the federal government's responsibility to prosper middle of Texas. It's the folks in the middle of Texas' responsibility to prosper that and create the kind of environment that has those jobs where people can get, can go to work. So I appreciate that this state-based effort, I hope, will show some promise, because I'm, I'm not real keen on the federal successes, and maybe we'll have a different approach. So, Yieldsback, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman's time has expired. The Chair recognizes the gentle lady from Washington State for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you as well for your leadership of this committee. We really appreciate it. And thank you, Secretary Vilsack, for being with us today, and thank you for your, you and your team for all the work that you've done so far on implementing this program. Before I get started, I have to say that I think it's a little odd that we're having this hearing right now, but for, we have a lot of information, just a few weeks after the request for applications went out. When we have more information and you have information on the types of applications you've received, et cetera, I think it'll be an important conversation. So I hope we'll have a chance to have that conversation as well. That said, these pilots are extremely important. Back in May of last year, I introduced the Enhancing Employment and Training through Education Act, three-year, $30 million competitive grant fund to encourage states to provide targeted employment and training programs. It was based on Washington State's Basic Food Education and Training Program, what we call BFET, which has been a highly successful program in our state. And that bill was included in the Farm Bill and, from the start, and we fought very hard to increase funding for these pilots. And at the end of the conference committee, we have what we have today, which is an expanded program, $200 million, and up to 10 pilot programs. So I'm very excited about this. Washington's BFET program has proven to be very successful at helping low-income individuals get jobs. We have 11,000 people who've gotten jobs to date. During the height of the recession, 60% of Washington's BFET participants found jobs. And a recent analysis of our program found that fewer than half of those enrolled remained on government assistance two years after starting the program. So that's the kind of success I think that we're hoping will stem from these pilots and greater learning on, on what can be shared amongst all of us across the country to have successful programs. Unlike most federal job training programs that exist today, these pilots will provide targeted employment and training resources tailored to help low-income adults currently receiving SNAP benefits. Historically, programs that serve SNAP participants have provided limited job search assistance, and expansion of a Washington State-style program will encourage states to administer programs with meaningful education and training opportunities, enable participants to obtain industry-recognized degrees and credentials that are definitely highly valued and help, help really determine long-term success. This is a smart way for us to invest now in education and training and career opportunities and save money as these workers transition off of SNAP. So thank you very much for your work on this. Can states, oh, I had one kind of clerical question, I guess. Can states submit more than one application for the, for the potential pilots?
I don't think there's any restriction on the number of applications that a state can submit. It, they might want to think about the strategy behind that in terms of being able to distinguish the characteristics of each application. But I don't think, again, we want, the more applications, the better. The more creative the ideas, the better.
Okay. Thank you. And to what degree do you think current state ENT programs will intermingle with these pilots, or do you have any expectation around how that might work?
Well, I know that Kevin Kinkanen traveled out to Washington because of the success of your program, and so, and he traveled to a number of different other states. So I'm very certain that characteristics of successful programs have been identified in the application process as criteria that folks should consider. So it did give us an opportunity to begin the process of educating people about what works. Now, we obviously have to do a much better job of that. You mentioned another issue, which I think speaks to the notion of folks crossing borders and searching work. Oftentimes, states don't necessarily recognize the credentials from one state to another, which may be an impediment, and it may be something that this process might allow us to address a bit.
No, that's a great point. Thank you very much again for being here, and I yield back the remainder of my time, Mr. Chair.
Gentleman, Lady Yieldsback, the Chair now recognizes the gentleman from Georgia, Mr. Scott, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Secretary Vilsack, as you know, with anything that we do, we have to balance access with integrity in any of our programs so that the public will, will maintain support and not lose faith in them. And in one of the issues, as I'm traveling my state, that I continue to hear is the issue of drugs. And when I talk to employers, the number of people that they have to let go because of failing a drug test, the number of people who come in and apply for a job who they cannot hire because they fail a drug test, is one of the primary concerns. And as I continue to talk to constituents, this is an issue that comes up over and over again. My question for you is, states who, in the application process, would prohibit somebody who lost their job because they failed a drug test, or who did not obtain a job because they had failed a drug test, how will your administration look upon that and the potential for drug testing for food stamp beneficiaries?
Well, we certainly, at this point in time, we don't require drug testing relative to the regular program. I would say that, that there is a recognition that there may be people who are in that able-bodied category that have substance abuse issues, and that may be the barrier that they have to being able to obtain or retain work. So the question would be whether or not states can come up with creative and thoughtful ways to deal with that barrier, to remove that barrier, so that person can be productive and no longer need food assistance.
Let me, let me be a little more clear about it. If, if, if in a state's application they said that we were not going to allow somebody who lost their job because they failed a drug test to receive federal SNAP benefits, would the secretary allow that as part of the application process?
You know, I'm not sure why a state would do that, because the purpose of this is to get people to work. It isn't necessarily to define how we ought to restrict this program for one reason or other. It is really designed to do two things. One, to get people to jobs, and two, those who have jobs, to get them better-paying jobs. So it would be a bit inconsistent, I think, with the purpose of the pilots to do that. And that may be a conversation that you and your colleagues have to have about the overall SNAP program. It's not something that I think we would probably be supportive of, but I don't think it fits into the reason why we have these pilots. The pilots are really designed to f-... The pilots are really designed to find people work and find people better-paying jobs.
Well, I think the problem that comes in is for the man and the woman that's getting up there every day and going to work, and maybe working at those starting wages, working on the assembly line, it's pretty frustrating for them to see somebody who maybe loses their job or doesn't go to work because they fail a drug test, to see them getting benefits.
Well, Congressman, I guess we all have personal experiences that sort of shape how we think about these things. I think back to my mother's challenges with alcoholism and the pride that she took in ultimately overcoming her addiction and having employment. It would be a sad day if our country wasn't willing to give her a second chance.
Mr. Secretary, with due respect, we're not talking about second chance here. We're talking about people who are making a choice, in many cases, to buy drugs instead of food. And it is one of the reasons that many American citizens have lost faith in this system. And so, again, I mean, I'm talking about protecting the integrity of the system, and quite honestly, and, you know, I don't think that working people's tax dollars and their wages should be going to pay for SNAP benefits for people who are failing drug tests. And I just hope that, you know, if a state says that somebody who loses their job because they failed a drug test should not be eligible for food stamps, that the agency would respect that decision by the leadership of the states. With that said, Mr. Chairman, I'll yield the remainder of my time.
Gentleman yields back the balance of his time. The chair now recognizes the gentlelady from California. And would note, in spite of my earlier comments, few states have the relationship that Oklahoma and California have had over the last eighty-five, ninety years. Gentleladies recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Mr. Secretary, for coming. I'm not going to talk about a pilot program, but I am going to ask about, California has California's Success Program, which partners with community colleges to execute training programs. It encountered some problems with the USDA deemed that the program was supplanting rather than supplementing a program. Can you give California some state guidelines on how to modify a program so it does not run into statutory problems?
We'd be happy to work with the state to try to find better alignment. You know, this is really about encouraging, not discouraging.
Yes, and we had some community colleges that had program set up, and then they were deemed not being able to run. I also have another question, but I will submit it to your staff so that they can answer me on that particular question. And again, thank you so much. And, Mr. Chair, I'm going to cut it real short. I just want to thank you for allowing me to sit on this committee and being a part of it. You know, this will be my one and only term here in Congress.
You will be missed, the gentlelady will be missed. Thank you very much. Gentlelady Yieldsback, the chair now recognizes the gentleman from California, Mr. Lamotha, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a real pleasure to work with you as chairman on this committee here. You're a person that seeks and finds solutions, brings people together, and a great example, I think, we can all have around here, so I appreciate this time. It is interesting, in the camaraderie of this committee here, I've heard at least three complaints about why we're having a hearing today, and I'm reminded that it's the job of the People's House to have oversight of the federal agencies and departments that we appoint and deploy. And so, anytime we can have a hearing on how a program is being implemented, or how it's coming along to be implemented, I think it's a good thing to have that in front of the American people. And conversely, when you hear that maybe bills have moved to the floor a little quickly, and we didn't have a hearing about it, I just am kind of mystified as to how those two things oppose each other. Anyway, so it's good we're doing this today and talking with the secretary. Appreciate him attending here and updating us on how things are coming along. The SNAP program, known as supplemental nutrition, I don't think it's supposed to be all, the be-all and end-all for all types of assistance for people. That's why it's the word "supplementals" in there. But it is proper for us to fine-tune and course-correct on programs the government has started and implemented over the years. So, in doing so on these pilots coming up, I think it's a very good thing that we have, we're looking at some refinements to work requirements. If I may just offer though, Mr. Secretary, I'd be remiss if I didn't at least mention it, as a Californian with our drought situation here, that your folks are working with our growers out there as well on implementing relief on that, so if I'd just ask you to continue to keep an eye on that, and things seem to be coming along pretty well at this time, and also, I'll take a look over your shoulder at how Forest Service is doing here, because the fires are just devastating in Northern California as well, Siskiyou County. And I remember you had visited Trinity County, next door here, just not too long ago. It's devastating out there, and we need a lot of help to get the Forest Service on track with managing those lands. So that said, back to the topic here, I'm curious, you know, we've seen in the long history of welfare reform that the work-first projects have far exceeded the education-only projects in terms of how promoting work and increasing earnings, both in the short and long term, that they've worked pretty well that way. The Department of Labor has even moved away from education and training-only models. Can we receive a commitment that you would also consider that work-first types of projects have proven to be successful when selecting these applicants?
Well, Congressman, the pilots will allow work to count as an E and T activity, and that's different than the core E and T program. Obviously, we want to make sure there's an adequate level of protection so that it's not abused, or that individuals can't be unduly sanctioned for noncompliance, but unless there's compelling evidence that they refuse to comply, and in that case, obviously, that's a problem for them. But, yeah, this is going to count as an E and T activity in this pilot.
Okay. You know, as kind of alluding to what Mr. Scott was saying a while ago, I think the American public that pays the bills expects to see that people that are able are seeking work, and that work-oriented programs are at the forefront, and just to keep the ball moving on unemployment, and people understand the value of jobs. So that's why I bring that up. So, appreciate it. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman yields back the balance of his time. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from Oregon, Mr. Schrader, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it very much. It's been my privilege to serve on the committee with you, and one of the few bright lights in my congressional career is working on the Farm Bill with you and the rest of the members of the committee. Truly couldn't tell, Republican from a Democrat, and I think that's due to your leadership and the ranking member. Appreciate it. I'd like to switch gears a little bit here, Mr. Secretary, since we're talking in general also about some of the other elements of the Farm Bill that did pass. One of those was to have the Department of Agriculture consult with the Department of Labor in their use of what we call hot goods, in dealing with some of our farmers, in particular those dealing with perishable goods, as you know, and others, that hot goods legislation grew out of a depression-era program to give the Department of Labor ability to deal with willful violations of wage-and-hour law or child labor law, and allow the Department of Labor to confiscate usually textiles or hard goods, so that, you know, farmer, individuals, businessmen and women that were not following the law would be encouraged to pay the penalties and actually reinstitute the wages for these people. It's been expanded, particularly in recent years, to include perishable products. And as you may know, in Oregon, a couple of years ago, the Department of Labor swooped on to a couple of blueberry farms in my district in the state of Oregon, and threatened and extorted money from blueberry growers, saying that they were going to quarantine and confiscate this crop of perishable product unless they admitted guilt, paid penalties, paid fines upfront, for which they are supposed to have due process. Matter of fact, the conversation I had with the Department of Labor in 2012, they indicated they don't do this until they've exhausted all other resources, and the farmer has had an opportunity to make his or her case. That was not done, however, by the regional representatives of the Department of Labor in Oregon. And as a result of that, we've reached out to you and your office to talk a little bit with the Department of Labor as they move forward in their use of hot goods. There's been two court cases that have said that the Department of Labor willfully violated the rights of these farmers. Matter of fact, while they didn't judge the use of hot goods necessarily, the acts were so egregious, the two courts have said that the money should be returned to these farmers. The Department of Labor, to this day, has not been able to find all these workers that supposedly were on these farms that did not get paid. So, to that extent, very interested in your comments about any conversations you've had with Secretary Perez or folks in your office about how to work together on the implementation. So, farmers have due process, and workers get their due rights at the end of the day.
Congressman, personally, I've not had a chance to visit with Secretary Perez specifically about that issue. We've actually been working collaboratively on this issue that we're here today to talk about, which is the E and T training program, getting his thoughts and his team's thoughts about how we can structure this in terms of getting people lined up with the demand-driven jobs and pre-appendeeship opportunities. But given the fact that you've raised it, I'll be more than happy to reach out to him. I suspect our staffs have probably talked about it, but it's, let me read this note here. You know, part of the challenge, I think, is sometimes, there are a lot of areas where I have to visit with sister agencies of the agricultural economy and what's going on. Most recently, the child labor issue was an issue that we talked a little bit about with the Department of Labor. We are conversing with them on this, we're making sure that they understand what a perishable commodity is, and we'll continue to consult with them. But I'll be happy to talk to Secretary Perez about your concerns.
If you could, I'd appreciate it. On the Horticulture Committee, Chairman Scott and I, and the rest of the committee, bipartisanly very concerned about misapplication of what was originally intended as a good tool in the toolbox, and want to make sure that's not used again in a way that, you know, frankly denies Americans' due process. So if you could give back to our committee, and I'd certainly appreciate it. With that, I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman yields back. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from Illinois, Mr. Davis, for five minutes. I assume we're about to start harvesting corn, correct, Mr. Davis?
Actually, some fields are already there.
My people feel better already.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for coming to the 13th District last week, and just north of where we were, they are already harvesting. How about Iowa, Mr. Secretary? Have they got any out of the field yet?
Well, honestly, I'm hoping they wait until we have enough rail cars to be able to ship it to where it needs to go.
Ironically, I just...
I don't think we're quite, we're close, but not quite there yet. And talking to the farmers, some beans are ready, but the corn's not quite where it needs to be.
We've got an opposite problem in central Illinois. The corn seems to be ready, the beans are a little behind, but I just left a TNI hearing, ironically, on rail reauthorization. This was passenger, though.
Did you get it done? Oh, no.
Yeah, that's why I came back here.
We may have to fill some of those cars with some corn on the way.
Hey, I don't want to reiterate some of the issues that are very important that I know we talked about today, and, you know, my issue that we talk about often when you're in front of this committee, has to do with the school nutrition program, and my invitation to you still stands, to come to Illinois and visit with some of the districts that are having some concerns, and some that have pulled out of the school nutrition program. And I also want to thank you, because a representative of your agency is actually going to participate in our School Lunch Summit in Pana, Illinois, at the end of this month. So, thank you, and invitation for you to come, too, if it fits, would be on the table also.
Congressman, as part of that, since you've raised it, you should make sure that those school districts that are challenged are aware of a program that we're putting together with Mississippi State to provide intensive help and assistance for districts' strategies, and mentoring, and peering, and basically partnering them up with other communities that have successfully implemented this. So, we're excited about this opportunity to reach out to school districts that are challenged, and to try to figure out ways to make it a little bit better for them.
I would love to have some more information on the Mississippi State...
We'll get it to you.
...the consulting that they were able to do. I would love to send our school districts who are having problems with them. And it seems to be growing in Illinois on this issue. We just saw the second-largest school district that we have in the state of Illinois pull out of the school nutrition program. It's in Wheeling, Illinois, just north of Chicago, in the Chicago suburbs, where they're giving back upwards of $900,000 a year because it's not profitable for them to be able to continue to participate. And those are the issues that I want you to see on the ground, and want to continue to work with your administration, and work with the USDA to find that flexibility and that sweet spot that we know is out there, because we all have the same goals. We all want to make sure that the kids eat healthier. We all want to make sure that the kids actually eat and not waste the food. And I think some small flexibility within the program could be the answer, and that's what I want to work with your agency on, and work with you personally on, Mr. Secretary. And that's what I came here to talk about today, and I appreciate your willingness to be here. I appreciate your willingness to send somebody to address the issues in our district, and I also appreciate your willingness to work with institutions like Mississippi State to try and help schools that are hurting. But I also want to urge and counsel you and the administration that it seems this issue has become somewhat of a demagoguing issue, more of a political issue, and that's not why I'm interested. I'm interested because I'm a parent of three teenagers in public school. I'm interested because my school administrators are the ones that are bringing this up as a problem, and I appreciate your willingness to be a participant in the debate, too. And I don't have any particular question for you, but I'm happy to have any response that you may have, and thank you again.
Well, Congressman, we certainly appreciate your heartfelt concern about this, and, you know, I know that there are some school districts, particularly in rural areas, that, for a multitude of reasons, are challenged: declining enrollments, declining state assistance. It does create a stress, which is why we decided to put this opportunity with Mississippi State together. The theory behind this is that we will be identifying school districts in each region of the country that have challenges. We'll have them come down for a day-to-two-day intensive training at Mississippi State, they have a Center for Nutrition down there. We will then identify school districts of a similar type and nature that have successfully, over the part of the ninety-plus percent of school districts that have embraced this, to help them create some peer-to-peer opportunity. And then we have additional grant resources, and as we learn about challenges, you know, we have been willing to grant flexibilities. Wheat pasta is an example, some of the breakfast challenges and requirements. And we're seeing more resources going into this program on total, about $200 million of additional revenue going to schools. So, we're going to continue to work on it, and we're going to continue to try to be helpful.
Well, I appreciate that. I know many of my school districts are having challenges in the rural areas, but, you know, the second-largest district in Illinois is not in a rural area, it's in Wheeling, Illinois, very suburban, Chicago, a wealthier district, too. So, I look forward to having them work with Mississippi State, too. And also, since we're talking about food nutrition benefits here, the reason I want to make sure that we see your continued work on flexibility is because the child that's hurt the most when the requirements are less flexible, is the child that gets his or her only meal of the day at school. And I want to make sure that the school has that flexibility to provide that healthy meal that we all want that child to eat. So, thank you. My time has expired, sir, and it's good to see you again.
Gentlemen's time has expired. The chair now turns to the gentlelady from New Mexico for five minutes, and hopes that we all get rained on this weekend at home.
It's one of those mixed blessings, Mr. Chairman. We want sufficient rain always to address our drought, but we don't want a deluge that then creates watershed problems and continued flooding. So, I'll hope that, like the bipartisan comments that have been made here today, having a lot to do with your leadership, I use this committee as a shining example when I'm back home for my constituents, that we get just enough rain, not too little, not too much. And it actually is a great segue, Mr. Chairman, into my question. I do appreciate that we're working hard to figure out the best way to make sure that we're addressing hunger and access to the programs that make a difference, but making sure that those programs have integrity and accountability, and so I'm really interested in finding that balance, particularly in New Mexico. And while we're seeing the economy improve across the country, that's not true everywhere. And while the nation, Mr. Secretary, as a whole, has seen a complete job recovery in terms of the jobs lost as a result of the recession, that's not true in New Mexico. And in fact, we have job losses just above 4% still, and in my, the heart of my... And in the heart of my district, Albuquerque, we're still in a double-dip recession. And I know that you're fully aware, and I appreciate that, that the whole department's clear, that we're number one in the country for hungry children, and we're number two in the country for hungry adults. Issues I'm very concerned about and working diligently to address. New Mexico is interested in the pilot and is a state that's long sought after the waiver for work requirements, given these conditions. We had our Human Services Secretary before one of our subcommittees, and the secretary has made it very clear in her statements, her leadership, and in this administration -- and I don't agree, and that's okay -- but they've made it very clear that these benefits, these entitlements or programs, nothing more than a transfer of resources from people who pay taxes to people who don't, that that system in and of itself is unfair. Now, that bias creates real issues, including that we've had a considerable backlog in applications requiring court orders. And I use that in the plural, and those debates continue. So what I want to talk about is, I absolutely want poverty addressed in my state. I absolutely want people to have access to meaningful employment. We absolutely want able-bodied individuals and families to have access to success. But to penalize children and adults who are currently the hungriest in the country, if not careful, is exactly what will happen if a state like New Mexico isn't clear about creating those balances. Can you talk to me about how you're going to evaluate these states, what you're going to do to make them accountable, and be clear that the intended purposes for your pilots are met, and that states with a philosophical difference to these pilots would not be allowed to manipulate that in order to stop, say, the distribution of SNAP and food stamp benefits?
Congressman, I think it starts this afternoon at approximately 1:30, when I'll speak to Governor Martinez about this very issue. I've got a phone call scheduled with her to talk about the pilot and to talk about how New Mexico potentially could be involved in this effort. I would say first and foremost, the application process is pretty clear that there's going to be a requirement that data be collected, that there be a serious evaluation of programs, that there'll be some accountability. If programs don't meet the goals outlined in the application, we reserve the right to basically stop the pilot. This is not designed to be a punitive effort. This is designed to be an incentive-driven effort in the hopes that we identify the best practices that then can be utilized by us to do a better job of the regular program. As I've said several times today, we really have got to do a better -- we, the collective we, have got to do a better job on this employment and training effort in SNAP, to really connect the people that are looking for work, want to work, would love to work, but are having a hard time finding a job, having the skills to get the jobs that are in demand. And for those who currently are working, maybe we get them a better-paying job so they don't need as much benefits or any benefits at all.
And to that end, Mr. Secretary, is it possible, and not doing sufficient research before this committee hearing, to identify what your authority is? But it appears to me that before a state like New Mexico ought to even be invited to prepare a pilot, that they better ought to assure you that the current requirements are being met, including that the backlog is addressed. Because that's really had to be done by local advocates and partners, because there hasn't been accountability support outside of the state. And it appears to me that that would be a very vital role for USDA. And if that's viable, possible, and you agree based on your independent review of the state, that would be most helpful to making sure that we are addressing hunger in New Mexico.
I can assure you, Congressman, that we take very seriously the responsibilities of states to actually make this program available to people and not to create unnecessary or undue barriers to participation. When I became secretary, there were a number of states that were underperforming in terms of eligibility. There were states that had less than 50% of eligible people actually participating in the program. Today, our participation rate is 83%. And, you know, obviously, we're sensitive to the need to get people who are eligible and entitled to the program the assistance they need. At the same time, we are cognizant of the fact of the need to do a job, a better job of creating opportunities for people who can work to work, which reduces the reliance of the program, which, you know, that's what we ought to be doing.
Gentleman's time has expired.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
The chair would note to the membership that the secretary needs to depart at noon. That's 20 minutes. We have three more members. If we maintain our present number, we'll continue the five-minute rule. If we have a whole number of members, we may discuss shortening that to allow everyone a chance. With that, the chair recognizes the gentleman from Florida, Dr. Yoho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, too, would like to say how much I appreciate your leadership on this committee, your bipartisan support, and your stellar effort to get the Farm Bill passed, and your statesmanship out there on the floor. It was a highlight of my first year in Congress, and I appreciate your leadership. Mr. Vilsack, I appreciate you leading the USDA. One of the things that's come up several times is the integrity of the program for the SNAP program. Mr. Conway brought it up. Mr. Scott, Ms. Grisham, and myself have personally seen people abusing the system or making poor choices. I was back in the district right before we came back, and this young fellow came in to a Jiffy Store. He was buying gas, six-pack beer, cigarettes, and he bought his sandwich with his food stamps, and then he pulls out cash to pay for the other things and lottery tickets. And that's the kind of things that ruin the integrity of the program, because the working person out there, as Mr. Scott says, we see hard-working people paying their taxes and those things going on. And it just kind of erodes the faith of the American people. And I know we're working on it. We can't stop all that. But I felt like I should bring that up, because I see that often. What I'd like to bring up is, you stated there are many different segments of SNAP. What is your goal, to reform, refine, streamline the SNAP program? And what is that time period? I mean, if you could ultimately pick a program where it doesn't have so many segments to it, can you streamline it?
Well, Congressman, we are engaged in and involved in trying to figure out ways to streamline processes at USDA. Each missionary has a requirement that I've imposed to have two process improvement programs in place in an effort to try to save time and save resources. It's part of our administrative services process. We've already identified over $1 billion in savings. I can't speak specifically to efforts relating to SNAP, but I'd be more than happy to let you see what we're doing in the process improvement area, to assure you that we are focused on this. I also want to say that we, you know, we take our responsibility on fraud and abuse very seriously. Over 700,000 individual interviews and investigations were conducted in fiscal year '13. We took a look at thousands of stores who we felt, as a result of the data mining that we do, might be not playing by the rules. Nearly 2,000 were either disqualified from participation in the program or sanctioned as a result of that review on an annual basis. We have the lowest fraud and error rate in the history of the program. There's still work to be done. That's why we have proposed a series of measures to increase the number of inspectors and auditors and investigators in USDA. It's also a reason why we've suggested a change of stores that qualify, the qualification standards in terms of the kinds of foods that they sell. We know that a lot of problems occur, not in the large-scale chain grocery stores--
Right.
--but in a lot of those convenience stores. And so we are taking that accountability responsibility seriously, and we will continue to work on that.
Okay. That's good to know, and I appreciate that. How does this pilot program differ from the TANF reforms that were made in 1996 and implemented? And I think it was July 1, 1997.
Well, this program is really designed to sort of be like a match.com. There are people out there that are capable of working, that want to work, or that are currently working, that would like to work better-paying jobs. They just are having a hard time figuring out how to do that. And then there's that responsibility that we have to try to provide help and assistance. And so what this is designed to do is to say to states and local nonprofits and so forth, be creative. Figure out ways in which we can create that connection. Figure out ways in which we can improve job searching skills, improve basic skills, so that people understand that when they have to come work at 8 o'clock, it means they got to be there a five-minute stay, et cetera. So it's really designed to create that connection, to reduce the number of people needing SNAP because they have a job or better-paying job.
Okay. And that's good to know, that also. Can other states opt into this pilot program over the 10-state allotment? If you've seen this successful, can we roll other states into this?
Well, if you give us the permission to do that, we can. Right now, with the tough evaluation process, we really do want to identify best practices. And the hope is that by identifying these best practices, we can then basically expand those in the basic program, the basic ENT program, to eventually all 50 states. That's the whole purpose of this, is to figure out what works, and then to say to other states, this works, try it.
Okay. I've got one other statement, but I'm out of time. I'll get it to you, and I appreciate you being here. Thank you. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from Connecticut, Mr. Courtney, for five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, and like others, I want to salute you. Over the last four years, I've sat on this committee and watched your extraordinary deft touch as chairman, trying to navigate a very challenging piece of legislation. And I want you to know that even in New England, you have a fan club. Whenever I go to the Connecticut Farm Bureau, they speak of you very reverentially. So your reputation is wide and far. Mr. Secretary, I appreciate the comments you've been making earlier about the fact that, you know, the best way to reduce food stamp expenditure is to increase employment and earnings. That's the path that we know. And the good news is CBO is already starting to signal that we've sort of hit the tipping point. And if this recovery can be nurtured and grown, that in fact, you know, that expenditure is going to fall for USDA. In light of that, well, first of all, number one, I also would, just for the record, want to note that increasing earnings would also reduce expenditure. CBO has indicated that if we would actually pass the minimum wage bill, that there is actually an estimate in terms of the billions of savings for the taxpayer, that that would happen, that would occur. It's unfortunate that a bill that, again, has a discharge petition with close to 200 signatures in the House can't at least get a vote. And that's a side benefit that I think sometimes is overlooked. The other question I wanted to ask you is that the president, in July, almost unnoticed, signed the Workforce Opportunity and Investment Act, which is the updating of the job training program, hadn't been changed since Bill Clinton was president. And I know Secretary Perez is sort of hard at work in terms of getting, you know, the opportunities out there for workforce investment boards, employers, states, to take advantage of what I think is going to be a much smarter program in terms of connecting people to openings that are out there. And so I realize you've just sort of started the wheels turning, but, I mean, a state that or a group that wanted to pursue a pilot program, I mean, there's nothing that obstructs them or blocks them from sort of incorporating maybe some of the WOEA components that the Department of Labor is already out there now, starting to promote and educate people.
No, in fact, Congressman, we're encouraging that. In working with Secretary Perez, I think there are several elements of the application process and criteria that speak specifically to the work that they're doing to try to dovetail and to integrate. I think that Congress was fairly clear. They wanted us to work collaboratively at the federal level with sister agencies. They wanted us to work collaboratively with state governments, local governments, and nonprofits, anybody who was interested in trying to make the connection. I would say that I certainly agree with you on the minimum wage issue. It's 3.6 million folks who would not need SNAP or as much SNAP if the minimum wage were increased. And we are focused, despite the fact we've had 54 months of private sector job growth, a record, the long-term unemployed still continues to be a problem. And those precisely are the precisely the people that we're likely to get connected here in this employment and training effort. That's certainly going to be a focus.
Thank you. You know, this morning in the New London Day, which is the paper of record for New London County, where the unemployment rate is still 6.8%, but the headline was "Good Help Is Harder To Find." And it talked about how employers now, as opposed to a year or two ago, there's an opening, they're not getting 100 applicants, they're getting maybe a dozen at most. And again, that, you know, trying to connect people to those openings is really now becoming more and more of a challenge.
And what I hope from this is that the folks in the Human Services Department in the state of Connecticut speak to and communicate with the workforce development folks. Right now, I don't think enough of that happens at the state level, because these folks over here know who the SNAP beneficiaries are, and these folks over here know where the jobs are. They don't necessarily talk to one another. If they did, I think we would make better connections. So that's part of what we're going to try to encourage, is more collaboration within departments within states as well.
Well, I think that'd be a good message for all the members to take back to their states, that, again, there's, with the Farm Bill and then with the Investment Act, I mean, there's really some good synergy that can really, again, accelerate the recovery. Without a yield back.
Gentleman yields back. The chair now recognizes a gentlelady from Illinois for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since this is likely our last hearing that we'll have during this congressional session, I, too, want to thank the chairman and the ranking member for your hard work. It has been a pleasure to work with folks who understand the importance of working together. And I personally want to thank the secretary for coming to my district on Monday. It was, I thought, a great session with our farmers, and I want to thank you for taking the time to come. I apologize in advance if any of these questions were asked. I just have a couple. I was in another hearing for another committee I'm on. But it's my understanding that you'll be partnering with states and local workforce boards and also local nonprofits. But will the pilots be working directly with local employers and then also with local educational institutions such as community colleges as we move forward on this? Or is that just up to what the pilots end up applying for?
There's nothing to discourage that, and I think probably there is a lot to encourage that. That's precisely what we want to see, is collaboration at all levels. And so obviously, that would be a factor in strengthening an application if we saw significant collaboration at the local level.
And as it pertains to encouraging different components of the pilot programs, something I hear all over our congressional district when I'm home is the importance of affordable childcare for people to go back to work. Will there also be any components to encourage that as part of these pilot programs? Anything that the USDA can help to have that part of the equation as we talk about this going forward?
There would be the capacity for that element and other elements similar to that, transportation issues, to be addressed in the pilot and proposed in terms of utilization of some of the resources for the benefit of reducing those barriers. Bottom line is a better understanding of what those barriers are and a better understanding of how best to address the barriers. That's part of what we hope to be able to get from these applications.
Okay. And then lastly, I mean, you were just in our district, so you understand the rural nature of it. We have pockets of a little bit more urban areas, but I represent mostly a rural district. So as the pilot applications come in, do you consider kind of the disparities and making sure that we have geographic, I guess, making sure that geographically we have a good representation in these pilot programs?
That is absolutely part of what we will consider. And I can assure you that we will have a good representation of both urban, suburban, and rural areas, so that, again, we identify best practices for all states. Every state has a rural area. And some states, obviously, are more rural than others. But at the end of the day, a lot of the unemployment challenges, a lot of the SNAP challenges are in those small rural areas where unemployment is higher and long-term unemployment is more severe and poverty is more persistent. So clearly, we're going to be focused on making sure we address the rural challenges. And again, if we can identify best practices, things that work, then hopefully we can replicate that in other states and bring these numbers down.
Okay, very good. I look forward to seeing how this all unfolds as we move forward, and want to thank you for your time today. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlelady yields back. Seeing no other members seeking recognition for a question, the chair would simply like to note once again that the secretary, thank you for being here, your insights, and your appreciation for how important the committee views this endeavor to be. And with that, I thank all of my colleagues for their attention. And under the rules of the committee, the record for today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplemental written responses from the witnesses. Any questions posed by a member, this full committee hearing is now adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.